All right, the regular meeting of Amelia County Board of Supervisors, June 19th, 7:00 PM, is now in session. Mr. Whitaker, would you mind leading us on the occasion?
Let's pray. Gracious Father, we do love you and praise you. Just want to thank you so much for the day you've given to us. We want to glorify you and bless your name with everything we do and say throughout this meeting and every time. I pray this all in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the covenant which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a quorum. We'll go forward. Anything concerning agenda?
Mr. Chairman, we do have one issue, one item that's on an amended agenda. If we could amend it for discussion of refund. And that paperwork's up in front of you.
Okay. General, what's your pleasure?
Move the approval of the agenda with that addition.
Hold the favor.
Aye.
All opposed? Approval of minutes, May 15th, regular meeting, and June 6th, call meeting.
I move for approval, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
On the special called meeting, it says that I said a camera showed some erosion, and it should say corrosion. The camera back in 2017 showed some corrosion. It also said that Mr. Jones affirmed the coating was in good shape. What he really said was, what he can see is in good shape, and that he doesn't know about under the silt.
All right. Any other questions?
So I would move to accept as amended.
Brenda, you have?
I'll make the corrections.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carries. Approval of financial reports, treasuries, May 2019 accountability balance sheet, revenue reports from May 2019, expenditures report from May 2019, accounts payable list for May 2019. You want to put them all together, General?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and I'll move to approve these financial reports.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried. All right, at this point, we'll have public comments on anything that's not on the agenda tonight.
My name is Stuart Price. My wife Melissa and I live over in Chula. Recently, the board, as you well know, has announced a planned uptick in the shipments to Maplewood and corresponding host fee payments. Question has been asked, how will we manage those finances? And I'm glad to see that we can look forward to hearing more about that in a few minutes. As a resident, I have just started asking around for some ideas. One thought is to advocate a recycling enterprise, maybe in the industrial park, supporting the long-term goal of recycling and providing local employment opportunities in the technical industrial fields. Another thought is to expand activities at the Amelia Nautoway Technical Center, to offer classes in sophisticated industrial fields that are growing day by day. Right now, the school offers career and technical education in auto body, cosmetology, criminal justice, medical assistance, and nursing assistance. Additional classes, just for thought, might include advanced energy technologies, solar wind, expanded healthcare roles, construction, recycling waste management certifications, or perhaps linking local classes with local community college offerings in energy, environment, and sustainability. Of course, school board members would have the best ideas to foster advanced education. Thank you. I just wanted to put that out there. I certainly enjoy reaching out to the county and talking with you guys on a regular basis. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else have any comments tonight in their public comment section? One once, one twice, one three times. All right, we're going to move on to something else. Amelia County School Board, do we have anyone here, Mr.?
VDOT.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Whitaker?
You have your VDOT report was handed out this evening. There's a lot of good information that you could prove with your leisure, with your leisure. I do want to point out the second piece of that. Route 13 over in Powhatan is going to do a bridge replacement, and the detour is going to run through Amelia for, it looks like about a quarter of next year. And there's a map showing what that detour will entail. And VDOT just wants to make sure that y'all are on board and hopefully acceptable to that. I'm not sure what we can do if y'all say no. I guess that would be a VDOT issue. And speaking of, you could get it to VDOT, the new resident engineer is here tonight, Mr. Kyle Bates. I'm going to give you his card, and y'all be nice to him because he's just on the job a couple of days. I'll make you two dollars.
I already got his phone number. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Well, I don't have anything too fancy to say today. I just kind of wanted to show my face. And again, my name's Kyle Bates. I've worked for VDOT for six years. I'm the new resident engineer in Amelia. I actually live and have worked previously up in Fredericksburg, so got a little bit of a drive. Living in Spotsylvania County currently and driving on down here, but still getting to know the roads, know the people. I do have, you know, my mother lives here in Amelia, so I do know the area a little bit. So, you know, I'm looking forward to getting started. I've been working in Chesterfield and Amelia and Powhatan for about my third or fourth week now. So I'm an engineer by trade. I went to the Citadel down in South Carolina, and I'm a licensed professional engineer here in the state of Virginia. So you all have my phone number. My background's in maintenance, but I'm also dealing with any of the projects, basically anything VDOT. We're here to support you all and citizens of Amelia. So if you all have anything for me, don't hesitate to give me a call. You got my cell phone number, my ringer's on 24/7, for better or worse. You know, I'm always here. And we've got our office just around the corner from here as well. I've got some pretty solid operators and some good workers there that are looking to get some good stuff done in the county. So like I said, I don't have anything too fancy. I think the board report, you know, if you all have any questions or anything on that, feel free to let me know.
I have a couple, but they're not questions, they're directs, I guess you'd say. The roads we spoke about, Bell Road and...
Yes, sir.
The general area. The way they have been repaired in the past, well, a couple of years, they've been, if you've got a hole, they'll just patch up the gravel, raise it above the road level. I understand that's going to stop.
Yes, so those routes are listed on that plan. Bell Road, we didn't list them out by name, but we listed them out by route number. The plan moving forward for those is going to be, one, we've got to get a solid base down there. And from what I understand is happening, the trucks and the daily traffic that are on that road are tearing the road up, and it's our job to maintain that. And in the past, I think what's been happening in this residency is, you know, they're putting stone out on the road to hold it over. That's okay if you're doing it for a short amount of time, but to leave it that way all summer is not going to be acceptable. So we're changing the way we, that's one of the first things I said when I got in the door, we're going to change the way we do some of those maintenance practices. What you've probably seen us out there doing is putting down asphalt with a motor grader. It's a very serviceable patch. It does what we need it to do. It's going to hold the road together. And then the long-term plan is, we're going to keep an eye on it over the next couple of months, and then in the fall, we're going to come back and shoot it with a new, a brand new surface treatment, just like they did back in, I think it was 2015, through the Rural Rustic Program, where you all dedicated secondary six-year plan funds. So very similar to that process, but we're going to go in some spot areas and rebuild sections of those roads. And again, this is a greater problem, where I think we've got some heavy truck traffic that's tearing up the roads. And at the end of the day, we can't, you know, restrict the trucks from going to a particular area. If that's where they're going, we have through truck restrictions, but if that's where they're going, it doesn't matter if there's a through truck restriction or not. So, you know, what I will do is reach out to the state police and ask them if they have any interest in, you know, coming out and making sure that they're per the weight by the state of Virginia code. And if, more often than not, they are, but there's only so much we can do. We have to maintain what we're given, so we'll continue to do that.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Bates?
Yes, sir.
Route 609, Grub Hill Church Road, has, we've been told now for the last 12 months that the remainder of the 609 coming south, which torched 360 from where it left off at the Low Door Crossing, 636-609 Crossing, that they was going to finish asphalting the remainder of that Grub Hill Church Road out to Highway 360. I see it's, and it was going to start this year, and this year it's half over and it's not on here anywhere.
I believe 609 is down at the bottom of that list. I'd have to pull it up, but I believe 609 is one of the last ones on that list where it says res servicing.
Well, you know, it is, but 609 and 360, all right, you got it here, but doesn't say much other than that.
Yeah, I believe that is done. So let me, let me double check on that, but I believe that our res servicing schedule has completed that route.
That's a heavily, heavily traveled road from Powhatan to Amelia, like 604, but probably got more trucks on 609 than 604. 604 is just like a real highway. 609 is rough, really rough shape. And anyway, want to make sure we were still, still on target.
It should be, it should be all buttoned up at this point, but I'll double check on that.
Make a lot of be pat.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bates. Appreciate you coming and appreciate your concern.
Thank you all. I look forward to it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
Later on, we have Carol Haynes, who wants to talk about Bell Road. And I know y'all just talked about it, but it might be a good idea while Mr. Bates is here to bring her up and she can go ahead and go through that.
That'd be great. Ms. Haynes, would you step forward?
She doesn't have to stay all night.
She's got reason to be upset.
She really does.
You know, the thing is, I have been traveling to Bell Road my entire life. My grandparents live there. My great-grandparents live there. Their house has been there since 1888. I know what the road looks like, and when they paved it in 2015, it was a wonderful day. And then to sit here and watch somebody destroy it. And the thing is, if I had gone out there with a jackhammer and done the damage, I would have been arrested. But yet these trucks, in their logging process, tore it up. On my way into here today, I actually was filming a third of this road. The road's two miles long. I'm filming it, a third of the road was nothing but new asphalt. And I would say at least half the road has been re-asphalated in the last week, which is great. But I mean, we have other concerns. We shouldn't have to redo something that was perfect in 2015. I mean, my biggest dilemma is when I drive the farm well, and I'm in the western part of the county, I'm real close to farm, more than like a food line here in Amelia. And as I'm driving along this road, if a car is coming toward me, I have to stop. I mean, I'm either going to take out a mailbox, or I'm going to swipe a car. That's what we need to move on to. We need to make all of our roads nice in Amelia. We don't want to redo something that was perfect. And I think that's where our focus should be. I mean, I know that logging companies pay money, probably more than most people, but if you're actually billing someone a nickel and then spending a dime to fix it, we need to rethink that one. Thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Would you like to respond? Maybe with rural rustic in the face?
Right. You know, Ms. Haynes and I have had a couple conversations over the last couple of weeks.
She's friends.
Absolutely. So very much, everything she said is very accurate. And I think what it boils down to, I would imagine a lot of these roads came in back in the '30s with the Bird Act. And we had, you know, VDOT gets maintenance funds to maintain the infrastructure as it is and as it comes into the system. Any kind of upgrades, we very much look to the counties in a lot of instances to prioritize things through the secondary six-year plan, whether it's rural rustics, or trench widening, or various, various things that we can look to, to improve. And I look forward, I mean, that's something that, you know, your county staff and I are probably going to be working on over the next year or so, is to talk about what the county's priorities are and what VDOT has recommendations for. And there may be some, some areas that we can improve. We just have to prioritize what those are. So, you know, very much so that I would agree. I think that the trucks are tearing up the road. You know, these roads were not built for that back when they came into the system. We used the rural rustic process in this, in this instance, to hard-surface this, which is a great program. It's a lot of your gravel roads to hard-surface roads, but then the trucks tear it up. So I would very much agree. If we had the money to put asphalt down on every single road in all of our counties, we would, we would do it. But it becomes, we have to very much rely on the secondary six-year plan for those high-volume, mid-volume secondary roads to try and find some way to upgrade them. So again, I look forward to, to working with the counties and seeing if we can prioritize some of the routes that you all have. And there may be an opportunity for, for upgrades throughout the county.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Step into a horn, Nelson.
Hey, I'm used to it.
Ms. Haynes, thank you again. All right, next we have any other questions or comments, General? Amelia County School Board, School Board to give an update on the school activities?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. It's good to be here with you this evening. Amelia County Public Schools is obviously working to close out the past school year and begin this new school year. We're working diligently on hiring for our vacant positions, and Dr. Reasoner is going to share with you what some of those positions are in just a moment. We wanted to share with you that we have hired Dr. Jan Medley, Principal of Amelia County Middle School, to serve as the new Director of Pupil Personnel and Federal Programs. We're excited to have her in this new position. We've also hired Mr. John Ringstaff. He's currently Assistant Principal at Powhatan High School to serve as Principal of Amelia County High School. Both positions begin July 1st. Just some other highlights from recent events. We congratulate our state champion, Howard Divens, for his performance in track, as well as recognize our Lady Raiders softball team for their efforts as a James River District Champions, the 2019 Region 2A Champions, the 192A State Quarter Finalists with their overall record of 21 and 3. So they had an exciting season. Our principals also shared some preliminary SOL pass rates for our three schools, and we're very pleased with how our students have done this year, and we look forward to having the official data come out in a couple of months. Also, we have approved, our school board has approved our federal grants for the upcoming school year, and I wanted to share just one piece of information with you, that we have submitted for a grant that Amelia County Public Schools has not been doing. It's a very small grant. It's the Title III Grant, and it is for English language acquisition, and it provides federal funding to ensure that our English learners receive English proficiency and develop academic achievement in English to meet state standards. As I said, it's a very small grant. We anticipate receiving about $3,900. Any school division that receives less than $10,000 is required to participate in a state consortium. So we have applied to participate in this consortium, which actually provides free training for some of our staff, our ESL teacher and our coordinator. And so we are excited about this possibility. We'll also, should be able to provide some after-school programs for our English learners as well as parent engagement events. And so at this point, I'd like to introduce Dr. Reasoner, who's going to tell you about our staffing, and then Ms. Bullock, our finance manager. Thank you.
Good evening. We have several positions open at the present time. If you go to visit our website, you can actually see the positions and take a look at the job descriptions. First and foremost, our middle school principal opening continues. We have high school counselors, high school biology teacher, we have special education teachers at all three schools, one each, middle school English, middle school math, elementary, paraprofessional, middle school paraprofessional, two or maybe three assistant football coaches, I'll have to check with Mr. Hawkins on that, and then of course, our high school athletic trainer. We have been extremely busy interviewing and talking with candidates over the last week to week and a half, and we anticipate having several recommendations brought before the school board on Monday, June 24th, at our closeout meeting. So many of the positions that I just named hopefully will be filled officially next Monday. That will put us in real good shape moving into July, which is crunch time for us. Briefly, just to update you on summer school, summer school continues at Amelia County Elementary School. All three schools are being programmed at the elementary school for the first time ever. It's been a wonderful opportunity to be more efficient with our use of facilities over the summer, and I think that we've heard no complaints. The staff seem to enjoy having everyone there. The secondary students are in Pod C, the elementary students are in Pod B. We have administrators on site for both programs, and everything's working very nicely, and we're very pleased with this new change that we implemented this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ryan.
And now Ms. Bullock.
Hey, good evening. The schools are busy preparing for the end of the fiscal year and our annual closeout meeting on June 24th. That's this coming Monday. We're pleased that we expect to end the fiscal year with money to return to the county. Our cafeteria account is doing much better than in years past, and I project needing to request a transfer of less than $10,000 from the local fund to cover a small deficit in the cafeteria account, which is much, much smaller than some of the years past. For school year 1920, schools, which on an weighted average charged less than the target weighted, target weighted average price of $3 for paid lunches in the school year 1819, are required to adjust, to adjust the lunch prices or add additional non-federal funds to the nonprofit school account, school food service account. In May 2019, we completed the paid lunch equity tool that DOE provides to us. And this tool calculated that for our 2019, 2020 paid school lunch prices, that they'll go up 10 cents a meal. This will make the price at the elementary school $2.65 for a lunch, and at the middle school and high school, it'll be $2.75 for lunches. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Dr. Harper, do you have any idea what's going on with the playground? Has it started yet?
No, the playground has not started yet, but we have been working with, we are part of U.S. Commodities, and so Mr. Cummins and I will be meeting next week, and then we plan to meet with, with Mr. Harvey on what the plan looks like, as well as having the schematic for the school board. And then we hope that it will start a little bit later in July.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you again. All right, next we have Department of Planning and Zoning, Public Housing, Conditioned Area, Rezoning.
Yes, y'all have the package for Renee Winfrey, who's wanting to rezonate six acres of land from a B1 district to the RR3 here in the village on Wayside Drive, which next, just across from Hope Chapel. And she plans to build her house on that property. Many years ago, they, I guess there was a, a large battle fought to get that from RR3 to R1 for a nursing home and about five other entities. We're going to go on that property. As we know, property changes hands and ideas change. And Ms. Winfrey has purchased that property, and she wants to build a house there. The Planning Commission heard the request at a public hearing in, in May on the 28th, and they voted unanimously to recommend approval of this rezoning process. Tonight would be the second public hearing required for this, and I'd be happy to entertain any questions you may have.
Mr. Chairman, Dave is not, go back to the cross on Hope Chapel. You can take the driveway that runs beside Hope Chapel.
It's, it's in that general vicinity.
You have anything else?
No, sir.
Okay. We open this?
Yes, sir, you can open the public hearing right now for comments.
This public hearing is open for the conditional rezoning. Anyone like to speak to it? All right, the public hearing is open. Anyone like to speak to it?
On this particular...
Yes.
I would, being adjacent property owner, I use that driveway all the time. I don't think anybody over there would have any intention.
Come up with it. We all got it.
I'm just going to say, I use that driveway all the time. The county has a right of way down that drive. I don't think any of the adjacent landowners would have any problem whatsoever with the rezoning of that. They would be good neighbors.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right, this will close the public hearing. General, do you have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion to approve this rezoning.
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Like sign. Motion carried. Next we go to Old Business Committee Appointments, the following appointments are needed, workforce development.
I don't have a recommendation.
All right. Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I was speaking to Greg Faulkner, the guy that we appointed to the Amelia Day Committee a couple of days ago, and he would like to sit on that board.
All right. You want to do that under advisement? Have you got anybody else?
No, sir. That, we do not have anybody for the Workforce Development Board.
I've already discussed it with Deborah Crowder, and she's okay with it.
Okay. General, what's your pleasure?
Move the appointment.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign.
If I may, Mr. Scott, last month you used Mr. Faulkner. Could you get us a, a contact point for him so we get, can get an address?
I think I, did I give it to you, Brenda? I gave it to Brenda.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
All right, Amelia Day Committee? All right, Amelia Day Committee, we have two vacancies in District Two, we have one vacancy in District Four, and two vacancies in District Five.
We'll take two, Fred.
That'll be fine. You have it?
I actually have four people who are interested, if we don't have anybody else.
Right now, we only need two for you.
I'll give you two from District, actually, I'm not sure which district they're all from, but Crystal Holmes is one. She's in my district.
Mr. Chairman, I have a person from my district. I have a person.
Okay.
Okay. That's District Four.
All right, you have, what's Crystal's last name?
Crystal Holmes. And the other three I had was Jessica Goff, Jill Easter, and Gina Salzall.
All right, you need two.
I need two.
Jessica Goff lives in that district. She votes at Mattox.
Yeah, so Jessica Goff and Crystal Holmes. Yeah, I make a motion that we accept Crystal Holmes and Jessica Goff for the Amelia Day Committee.
All right. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Next would be, we have one for District Four.
Mr. Chairman, I have a name of Lee Kearns. He would like to serve on that, that committee.
All right. All in favor?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion for Lee, Lee Kearns on the vacancy on the Amelia Day Committee for District Four.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. District Five, you have two.
I have two, but I'm going to give you one, and then Virginia Whitaker.
Virginia.
Virginia Whitaker. Virginia Whitaker. Add to motion.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Like, opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
So, Mr. Chairman?
I got one more.
Right, okay.
That, that one's.
You want to find one more?
I'm giving that, this person, I've got one more opportunity.
Okay.
John Tyler Community College Board, Peggy Morris, re expires on 6/30, and you have someone for that.
I had approached a retired teacher, and had been, she's told me that she's not going to be able to do it, so I approached a second one, and her husband called me today and said she's in Europe, and if we needed an answer, it would take a little while to get it from her. So we're still working on it.
Okay. All right, next will be IDA Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reappoint Wesley Morris and Dennis Tatum to the IDA.
All right, sir. Motion's been made. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries.
And Mr. Chairman, I have the name of Walter Townsend. I make a motion to, to add him to the IDA Committee in place of Buck Shale, Charles Shale.
Very good. All in favor?
Mr. Chairman, I would also like to nominate somebody for that position, Eldon Diefenbach.
We've got a motion on the floor, this one and then.
Did he make a motion or just?
He made a motion.
Okay, then I'd like to amend the motion or whatever we have to do, but I thought we were nominating people.
Okay, all right, we will do just that. And your man is, what's his name?
Eldon Diefenbach. He's in my district, and he has a business in the park. He'd be a great person to be on this IDA Committee.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, you can call for a vote on each candidate. You can call for a vote on each candidate, then you'd have your nominee, and you could vote on them.
Okay. And you, you're, what's your manager's name?
Walter Townsend.
Walter Townsend, all right. All right, Walter Townsend's up at this point, and.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, the eminence of filling this position right now, is it, is it something that we need to have done this evening, or could we take this to the IDA? I guess invite both folks to our next IDA meeting and see who folks think are best fit, get some recommendations from the IDA. Is, is that something that's reasonable, or do we just move on forward to this evening?
Mr. Chairman, we've done it both ways in the past, but they would make a recommendation to us, we would still have to, we'll have to accept it, we can always ask them for recommendations if that we could choose.
Anyway, Mr. Chairman, anyway, my, my contention was if, to invite both individuals perhaps to the next IDA meeting and, and have some discussion from that, and then maybe move forward from that area.
You want to withdraw your motion?
Yeah, if you want to, withdraw motion if that's what you want, fine.
Fine with me. But if you want a chance to see who's coming.
Right. So anyway, I, I guess then we just have to, we just have to make sure that we've got invitations out to each of them for our July meeting.
Very good.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Both of them withdrawn, motions are withdrawn.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, on, not entirely separate issue, but I do want to recognize Mr. Shale, Bucky Shale, he was a vital member of the IDA. Unfortunately, his, his help doesn't permit him to continue on right now, but he's been a valuable member, I'm guessing for right at 20 years.
August of 2000.
That's right.
He was also chairman, was he not?
So anyway, he's, he's been quite the valuable member, which, you know, we've had numerous involved throughout, so anyway, just wanted to make sure that we recognized him and thank him.
Very good.
And perhaps we could send out a thank you.
We'll get a resolution together. That's appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Most adequate. All right, actually, friends of the Public Library.
Mr. Chairman, that's actually the trustees of the James L. Hamer Public Library, it's not the friends.
We have.
We, the, the District Three, ones that are rotating off, they're not able to, to come back, but I have talked to the librarian, and Mrs. Hicks and Mrs. Head have consented to be reappointed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to reelect Carol Hicks to the, to the James L. Hamer Public Library.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign?
I'd like to renominate Beatrice Head.
Okay. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign? Motion carries. All right, next will be Maplewood.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, excuse me.
Murray Beth Harding.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I was informed today by Jennifer Jones that there's also a member from District Two on the trustees that needs to be appointed, but I just found out like 3 o'clock today, so I'd like that opportunity to find somebody for that.
All right, please let us know, and next time we'll do it. Maplewood Landfill about, whoop, we have Mary Beth Harding, District Three.
I don't have anybody at this point, Mr. Chairman.
All right, next will be Maplewood Landfill Advisor Committee.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For District Three, like to reappoint Walek Harding to another term.
Okay.
So moved.
Yes, sir. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Like sign? Motion carries.
Chairman, I'd like to appoint, reappoint Walter Townsend, District Five.
Good choice. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. District Two.
Do you need somebody to make this appointment?
Yes. You spoke to Frank, right?
Ray did, and Ray said Mr. Tyler was agreeable to go back.
Okay, then I make the motion that Frank Tyler would be reappointed to the LAC.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign?
And Mr. Chairman, for District One, like to reappoint Dennis Tatum. So moved.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Next, Piedmont Senior Resources, Frank D. Harris and Roger A. Scott. Do you gentlemen individually?
We both agreed January 1st, we would take, we would go another year.
Yeah, okay. So we, so we still need to make this motion?
You still need to make that motion.
So I'll make a motion then that Frank D. Harris and Roger A. Scott be reappointed to the Piedmont Senior Resources.
We'll do both together. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a special event from the Amelia County Fair. The application's been received to hold the Amelia County Fair September the 2nd through the 7th, 2019. A copy of the applications in your board book.
Chairman, I'm good with that. They do a very good job.
Very good. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. Update on Board Supervisor Special Call Meetings. Supervisor Scott has requested that an update be given on the special call meeting held on June 6th, 2019.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, when I made this request, it was because at that call meeting, there was no newspaper and no public because it was a very short notification, but since then, there's been a write-up in the paper about it, so we can withdraw that from the agenda.
All right, moving right along. Update on Broadband Project. Supervisor Scott has requested an update on broadband project.
And likewise with that one, I requested it before the public hearing was announced for tonight, so we can remove that one.
Right. Next, ongoing. Mr. Harris, you hear something?
No, no.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, many companies, when a new person is brought onboard, there's a formal onboarding process that orients them to the job. So speaking from experience from this board, I think we can do a much better job of preparing new members to be seated on this board. We have two new ones coming in January, and in, earlier in June, I asked Taylor Harvey to consider this, and I hadn't heard anything back, so I put it on the agenda. I think it would be a great asset to not only the two new members that were coming in January, but all future members of this board, that we have a formal documented orientation process to learn how everything works, who does what in the county. And I'd like to actually make a motion that we instruct staff to put that together.
You aware that Vaco has a?
I'm aware Vaco has a class, but it's usually not available until, I think, May. It was, it was not available anywhere near the time I was seated in January.
Okay. You also aware that Vaco has a new book out, they call it the Bible?
Yes, I'm aware.
Written by 38 lawyers.
Yes, but it does nothing about teaching people what goes on in this county. It doesn't have to be anything elaborate, just documented and formalized so that every person gets exposed to every department, every constitutional officer's office, all the people, and who does what, and, and how it all works, including the budget.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's a good idea. I don't have a problem with putting something together. I know that in the organizational meetings that we have in the first part of the year, we talk about, we, we have some information that we give to, talk about when we knew numbers and about the process, you know, Robert Rude Waters, that kind of thing. Having a condensed booklet that might include some of this information that, that Mr. Scott's talking about, you know, first department, who's in, who's working where and so forth. I don't think that would be too, too hard to put together. I think it's a good idea.
Gentlemen, anyone else?
I think staff could put something together that would, I would, that would satisfy this particular request, I think.
What, what is it that you want to consider in that?
I would, I would think that a, a, a orientation booklet of some sort that would, and as a matter of fact, I, I put one together for, for Southside when I had young people coming in to, first of all, work for the co-op, and it, it kind of helped because it gave them some idea as to, as to who did what, and procedures and, and lines of communications, how to report something, who to go to first, and, and the extent of involvement that board members, for example, would have in items not related to just board meetings, so to speak, and so forth. I think it's a good idea.
So, you have a thing, sir?
We do whatever we're instructed. Most of that stuff is there. Maybe we need to do a better job of assembling it and pointing it out. We've got a staff directory that describes what everybody does, where they work. I thought everybody had access to that, maybe not. We can, we can work on it.
Mr. Chairman, I think it's just an absolute waste of time. Well, as far as we got the manuals in place, they run through the order, we follow, we're supposed to follow the supervisor manual. I think we do a pretty good job of following, and as far as the plans that the supervisor go to, the plans, I don't much state. It'll be the first three days of January, first week of January, so that's enough. They'll make their officials. I think it's just a waste of staff time, personally, so I will give up against it when you give up.
Okay, let's take a vote.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I guess I'm just wanting a little greater clarity, so beyond like the staff thing, what, what are you suggesting again?
I'm suggesting that some sort of a booklet, manual, whatever you want to call it, very short, that describes all the interactions between departments and constitutional officers, how it all works, who the players are.
So.
And, and have the people go around and meet with all these people. I mean, Taylor mentions the, the directories available, but someone coming in may not even know that directory exists. That could be part of the orientation, working through the website, showing people where things exist.
All right, motion's been made.
Mr. Chairman, that information is available, it's just a matter of synthesizing, putting it in a, a, a format, synthesizing that material. That material is already there. It's just a matter of synthesizing that material and putting it together in a format that makes it readily available to, to any new person who is coming in. I think, I don't see a problem with that.
Yeah, and if staff's overwhelmed, I can, I'd be happy to put it together and work with them on it.
All right, we have a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a vote about District, if that's okay?
That'd be fine. District One is no. Two?
Yes.
Three?
I'm gonna vote no at this point.
District Four, we vote no?
Yes.
Motion is not approved.
Mr. Chairman, I, I mean, we heard, all heard the vote. We'll see if we can get something together to maybe satisfy what Mr. Scott's looking for, and maybe we don't need to revisit this again. We can, the stuff is there, we just gotta.
It's there.
Maybe organize it and point it out. Most of it's on the website.
I understand, I agree with that, it's just a vague situation.
We'll help you.
That's what the record, Mr. Chairman, make sure the record shows that that motion failed.
Mr. Chairman, I also like to point out that we, we rolled by that broadband so quickly in the agenda, that's when we had planned to hold the agenda, the public hearing.
I didn't hear the last.
We, we rolled by item five on the agenda so fast, saying we didn't need it because of the public hearing, that's when we'd actually anticipated holding the public hearing.
Yes. All right, so we have an update on broadband project, and we have a public hearing at this point. Anyone wants to speak to the broadband situation? Anyone wants to speak to, uh, the broadband situation? Hey, do you want my name and address?
Yes, sir.
Gentlemen, I want to compliment. Say your name first, I'm sorry. Juan Whittington. I want to compliment the, the board on, uh, this project. Uh, I, I really don't know anything that is of, of higher value than, uh, improving, uh, broadband in the rural areas. This is, the, the proposals that, uh, are online are, are very, uh, technical, and I would like to suggest that, that some professional guidance be sought with regard to assessing these proposals. I think it would be money well spent. Part of Amelia, uh, is like some of the other rural areas in the United States. Uh, we, we, uh, we just don't have, uh, the density to have terrestrial broadband, and so aerial is the way to go. There are parts, uh, under, underdeveloped parts of the world, third world countries, that are making great strides with aerial broadband, are really going to be, have better, uh, internet service than, than, than what we may have in parts of Amelia. It's very important for, uh, businesses, it's very important for ag. If we are working on, um, equipment and, and even operating equipment, there are, uh, programs that are integrated in the equipment, so we can't, we can't really be competitive. And this is true both in, in business and particularly in agriculture. There is, the area of education, I want to read just one comment that was made, uh, on an article in Palatine Today, that's their newspaper, uh, by a person that's across the river there from us. Said, "Definitely need to consider all the options, especially now that the middle and high school students are to be using their Chromebooks with internet for homework and studying. My kids have to leave the house for homework. Huge net service all last week left me with full knowledge that the satellite is overcrowded in my area and will never be fast enough for homework and online banking. This is an issue that I did not expect when moving to my wonderful home in a great community with top schools." Thank you, sir. Anyone else like to speak to broadband? All right, this is, I have to ask you one more time, anyone else like to speak to the broadband issue? All right, the.
Mr. Chairman, if the public hearing is closed, I think Mr. Gore can give an update with some timelines and things that we're looking at going forward.
Please have a key at this point, Mr. Gore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just, uh, for the board's information and for the citizens here. So this public hearing was required under the PPEA, which is the process that we're going under for this procurement. As far as where, what the next steps are in the next two days, uh, the county, in conjunction with Dinwiddie, will be conducting interviews of the seven firms that submit proposals. If anyone wants to see, um, those, uh, conceptual proposals, they are all on the county's website, they've been there since last week. Um, and so, uh, the goal after the, uh, interviews the next few days is to narrow it down to one or two top firms, um, and then do further detailed discussions, pick, pick a top firm to negotiate a contract, and the schedule calls for you all to be in a position to award that contract, uh, at your regular August meeting, if we keep things on track. So I just want to make sure everyone knew the timeline we're on, and that the information is out there, people want to look at.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, who is on this, uh, review panel, if you will, the interview panel from the two counties?
Um, it's the county administrators and a couple of staff people from, from each county. I don't have, off the top of my head, I don't have.
Any technical people?
Norm Cohen.
Yeah, the, the IT director from Dinwiddie County, uh, is on the, is on the committee.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Harvey, you have anything on this?
No, sir.
Okay. Next, be the ACT WRC certification. Mr. Scott has requested the above be placed on the agenda.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the risk of letting the cat out of the bag, Amelia has met all the requirements to become a certified, certified work-ready community. I won't go into all the details about what that means, but an official announcement event has been scheduled for July ninth. And for those who may not remember, we embarked on this effort over a year ago. It's involved the schools, local businesses, and county administration. A team was formed, and we all worked very hard to get this accomplished. So keep your eye on the monitor, the county website, and et cetera, as we announce the completion of this very important milestone.
All right, anything further, any questions, comments?
Did we mention this, July the ninth?
July the ninth, yeah.
What is this? Hi, this is the landfill tipping fee use. Mr. Scott has requested the above be placed on the agenda.
So this is, this is new? This is proposed?
Yes.
Would have been nice to see this earlier today.
All right, Mr. Harvey, would you like to read this?
Sure.
This will be a motion. Mr. Chairman, before he reads that, can I explain why I asked this to be put on the agenda? I asked Mr. Harvey on June third, where is it written that CIP projects are the only thing that can be funded with landfill fees? And he did a quick search and couldn't find anything. So, that either means it was never written down, or it's just folklore. I don't know what it means, but I would like to open up the discussion about using CIP, using landfill fees for other things, other emergency things, other than just CIP projects.
Address it, if you want to talk to it.
Yeah, this is the first time I've seen this.
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little confused here. Just, Mr. Harvey, is this the one that was, uh, overdone in nineteen ninety-one?
No, sir. I think we, uh, those of us that were around then can recall that, uh, obviously, the landfill was a very controversial thing, and when it, uh, it came up, there was, uh, an upheaval in the next election. And before the old board went out, uh, some of those folks spoke to what, what they'd done, what was coming, and what they hoped would happen. And the chairman of the board very eloquently said, "We brought this, uh, landfill here into Amelia to build capital items, and please remember that, and please adhere to that, because if we put it into the operating budget and get to living on it, that, uh, we're going to run through it, and when it's over, we won't have anything to show for it." So, from nineteen ninety-two until now, we've sort of evaluated the, uh, the income, the flow from the landfill. We would take a look at what we'd gotten from the prior year, we would take a look at, uh, what was projected, and we would generally take about eighty percent of that and allocate it towards CIP projects, which the planning commission would start on, uh, middle part of the summer. So, we, it was certainly allocated towards CIP projects. We never let any of it get into the, uh, the operating stream. But so far as having anything in writing, I couldn't, I couldn't find it.
One question I have is, how do we develop a budget for the CIP? Rainy day fund?
How do we develop a budget for CIP? Mr. Whitaker, Ms. Cave, myself, will, uh, sit down, we'll look at the revenues from the, uh, landfill from the prior year, we will ask, uh, inspector staff, maybe talk to the director over at the, uh, landfill about what they see coming, and we don't want to, uh, you know, it's not a, a thing where we want to be too aggressive and suggest that we approve, uh, CIP projects in excess of what we see coming. We always like to leave a little cushion, so if it's one point two million dollars that, uh, we've been trending forward, we think it's going to be steady, we take, uh, eighty percent of that, so we'd look at that nine hundred and sixty thousand dollars. That's typically the way we would, uh, work that.
Any other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not proposing we change that process, I'm just proposing that we add, and for other emergency situations. I'm not proposing we take the money and put it in the budget for operate, normal operating expenses that should be covered by taxpayer funds.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, we've got that process in place, from what I understand, and, and that process seems to work all right, uh, and, and there, and it meets at the beginning of each year anyway, or it's updated to CIP, it's updated, and there is an ample opportunity to consider additional projects during that process, so, you know, I, I, I don't, I, we don't have to reinvent the wheel here, I guess that's what I'm saying.
All, all I've ever been told is that landfill fees can be used for nothing but CIP projects. And I'm proposing that we use it for other things when.
Again, when that, when that, again, that opportunity is there, really, uh, when, when they consider.
I don't see it, and this doc certainly doesn't say it either.
Part of the, the process, as a matter of fact, when, and, and, am I correct, David?
You are. One of the things we've run into is we'll run a projection on the number of dollars we believe is going to be available. Like Taylor says, we don't utilize the whole thing, because some of those projects are, the, the research on them doesn't, it's not an exacting science. We looked at fifty thousand dollars worth of lights down at the elementary school, and the original plan had a step left out of it, it was another fifty thousand dollars. In that case, it went back to the CIP to have those funds added to it, but we do have some overruns, and, and, you know, there's a few dollars there to pick up those overruns, just like when we have overages, we have come in under budget, obviously, that money goes there. Since I've been here, and I missed the tornado, uh, really hasn't been an emergency thing that has required to tap those excess funds, but I don't think it's unreasonable, because the CIP is put together as a tool for you folks during your budgeting process, just like any other fund that is, and you do have a rainy day that you can tap, uh, in case of an emergency. That, that dollar amount is still there, there is, it, the CIP fund per se does not go broke, uh, because there is some excesses built in it, and there's nothing saying that y'all can't do, uh, just like any other, uh, allocation of money throughout the years. You, you, you meet, and you go where you need to get the funds from. Do you need to put it in writing, Mr. Scott? I don't know.
I'd, I'd like to see it in writing.
But we've, we've never tested that. The, the piece of paper you have in front of you, I'm assuming is that resolution?
Yes.
And that resolution doesn't commit you to the CIP, it could, or, for, for that particularly, because you guys cannot allocate funds for a future board. It just says, "This is what has happened in the past, and this is a resolution to say, 'We would like to continue down that path as we move forward.'" But again, nothing says that you couldn't reach into that on an emergency basis, from my perspective.
So, nothing says we can't reach into it to clean the tower?
No, there's nothing that would prevent that.
One month's worth of tipping fees would have been enough to clean the tower.
That would be up to the board, hopefully, under a project or something that puts it all together for allocations of funds. I'm not an expert in that, how, because I don't know the right terminology, but I think y'all have a lot of power to do a lot of things. But this resolution basically says, "We want to protect that flow of money, and we recommend that this board and future boards continue that policy." You know, next year, we're going to have at least a, a forty percent change in who's sitting up there. They get the same opportunity.
Oh, I know.
To, to change that flow.
There's already a long list.
I'd like to, I'd like to go here.
Mr. Chairman, I, I started on that committee for the last eight years, on this, and, uh, first off, where did this come from? Did this somebody y'all wrote up for this evening?
Yes, I did.
This come from, can I mention it, Rob?
This was something that was written up in response to my request. I got ambushed tonight, is what happened.
I couldn't hear you, where, where did this come from?
Yes, it came from me and the lawyer.
Okay, good, okay, now, no worries. All right, I haven't had a chance to read it, so I, I've got no intention of acting on this either, myself, now, let me say a few words about this grant, CIP money. I, I've been around a long time, and I have been on sports eight years, been getting ready eight years, and I've certainly not committed for the last eight years, with, uh, three to five commissions. We have spent the average of one million dollars per year out of the CIP funds, uh, as high as one and a half million when tipping fees were up, as low as six hundred thousand when tipping fees were down. This budget is going to affect the first anti-1, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars worth of CIP, and that call, maybe I'll talk about, uh, eight hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars of CIP money in it for projects, for new projects, Cap and D. For example, in the last several years, we have paid the driveway in the car garage at the high school, okay, or y'all can be with that, the driveway down to the bus shop, the roads from the high school over to the middle school, uh, the money in this year's budget to redo the playground where the young child got hurt, the second child got hurt, with new equipment and playground, that's thirty-five thousand, CIP money. You see what I'm, I'm trying to come in, so it's several projects. One set of, uh, of lights, uh, ball field lights, we call them, lights in the playground, has been in the process of being put in the elementary school playground for the second year now. Mr. Harvey, I think that's in, y'all working on that, I think, aren't you? Okay, all right, that's, that's a project, that's probably running behind a little bit, but it's, it's, it's being done, okay? So it's a lot of things that we've done, not that we've not been doing nothing, and I think that the way we've been with the newspapers, like we have been using the money, but we have been using the money, and we've been using it cautiously, let's put it like that, the word cautiously, and, uh, I, I like the word rainy day money. You don't spend all your money, just because we got the tip, tipping fee coming in all of a sudden, we got another really good contract since we lost one from Salem that really hurt us a lot, dropped it from over a hundred thousand a month back to thirty thousand dollars a month, and I don't think these figures ever got put in the paper, but that is one heck of a difference in your income. So, we, we use this common sense and discretion on how we spend this money. Now, if you want to put it in some kind of paper form, uh, I'm not going to, this is a project, recessed, and I, I'm not going to get involved in this, because I, I take time to read it and see if any word is acceptable to what I think, so I don't care if it's voting, Mr. Noddy. But, I, I want to get across to the taxpayers, just that a lot of money that's gone out of the CIP tipping fees to help this county, help the infrastructure of this county, we have not been setting on, but we, we've not spent it all, that's the reason we got some savings, and that's the reason we have a reserve. And that's the reason we have a reserve fund, this time of year. So with that said, I'll stop right there, and I'll talk to you a lot more, but we're spending a, a million dollars a year in our checking fees, okay?
All right, Mr. Over.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just one item, I guess, for clarity. The county does not have a contract for this. This is not our contract. This is Waste Management's contract. We get a tipping fee from what Waste Management brings to Amelia. So contracts come, contracts go. I would say that this is anything but certain that it's here, but it's expected and hoped for, I guess. But, you know, in my time, we've, I think I've seen tipping fees perhaps as high as one, as high as 210, and I've seen them as low as in the 20s someplace. And so that, that can be a wide range of things. And so it's certainly here for the benefit of our citizenry, and we hope to continue to do it that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, let me add that. Fire trucks and police cars. When sheriff puts on an extra deputy with CIP that buys, police car that buys the equipment, capital investment, new fire trucks, comes out of CIP money, okay? That keeps taxes from going up, okay? I just want you to understand.
The, the principle behind it is a capital investment. A replacement police car would not fall under the CIP. That would be operational and maintenance money. If Ricky got a requirement to go from 11 to 12 cars, that 12th car would be a capital investment the first time. The replacement would not. Now, the, the fire trucks were put into there because those are huge items that are replaced every 20 years. They run on O and M money from year one to year 20 for tires, oil changes, whatever it takes, just because of the huge investment value with those things. Some of them are as, as much as three quarters of a million dollars. Those are hard to replace under a regular O and M budget. So those were put under the capital plan. There are a few dollars that are spent under the, the CIP in the last few years, and, and I'll pick on the schools. It's the fixing of those parking lots and the roads over there. Those are actually O and M projects. You're supposed to keep up with your infrastructure once it's done. But that got way out of kilter, and an exception was made for O and M use of those monies for those repairs. We don't spend capital dollars to, to paint the interior of a building, because that's O and M money. You know, Darrell or whoever owns that building is supposed to go through their regular budget for O and M, i.e., the water tower would be an O and M thing. That one's, we've lost the handle on that at some point in time. So the exception could be made for that, and, and still stay within the, the greater parameters that we have been using. But the letter that goes out every August states what those dollars are to be used for. And there's a minimum dollar amount put to it, so we're not out there buying, oh, we're getting a new baseball bat. We're not going to do stuff like that with your capital money. So we put a base of $15,000 on it. Very few projects come in at $15,000. I think we did a computer buy not too long ago that was in the about an $18,000 range for new computers for an operation. So that's the theory that goes on behind the CIP, capital improvement, not O and M, not, hey, we screwed up, let's fix it. So if we don't have those parameters in there, this will get out of control. And, and that's just some of the reasoning behind how the CIP operates. But I'm not sure everybody reads those, those letters that are attached to it, that I send out every year, because of some of the stuff that comes in. And, and I've heard stories of, well, we don't put it in the capital improvement plan because they never give us anything. That's because you don't meet the criteria that's put out there. It's not because we don't like you, or we think your program's silly. It just doesn't meet the criteria that was established. Who established that criteria? I don't know. I inherited that criteria, and I've stayed with it for the last 13 years.
Very good. Ms. Cave, do you have anything you want to add?
I think David said it all.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, CIP committee meets, and they meet on a, on a, at a set time, correct?
What I do is I send out the call letters in August.
So the opportunity, then the call letter goes out, projects are recommended, and whatever, right?
Yes, sir. I send out the call letters with the projects that the departments have in place that are in the cycle, and ask for them to update those projects to make sure they're still viable, to make sure the dollar amounts are still correct. Because some of those projects, we've been carrying for a lot of years. So there's inflation factors that work into it, and a call for new projects that fall into the criteria.
And, and I guess that's what I'm, I'm getting at. And at that time, those, along with any other projects to be recommended, can be recommended at that particular time, correct?
And that window stays open from, I usually send out from about the middle of August with a callback for Halloween. And that gives me the first couple of weeks in November to try to rack and stack all these things, get the numbers associated with it, make the phone calls about this and that, and then send it to the planning commission with a rack and stack. They look at it, and then we put together a meeting in early December to bring to people that made these requests have the opportunity to come in and defend it and talk about it and try to persuade the committee that they, they're worthy of a rack and stack in the current year. And it's all based on, we've got this many dollars this year, and we're going to try to fund everything. This year, we went in with $750,000. We came out, for the first time ever, higher than what we went in with. So we requested more than the money we were anticipating, though the number stream has changed, and that's not going to be tough to meet this time around, because the spending window doesn't open until July next month.
And then out of the deliberations of the planning commission, they come up with the report, which is then presented to the board for its consideration, correct?
Yes, sir. And the board has the.
That's the process.
That, that is the process.
So there's an opportunity there. And, and this, I guess, I guess my question is, and, and my observation is that we've not had this kind of discussion in, in the past, you know, when we talk about capital improvement project, we just say the CIP is going to meet da, 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 da. So maybe, maybe this helps in terms of getting projects out there and getting them, you know, included or considered, let's put it that way. Because the consideration takes place when it gets to the board. Actually, there's, there's an opportunity along the steps along the way. So I guess that's.
I'm not, I'm, I'm. Mr. Harris, I'm not talking about CIP projects. That plan works great for CIP projects.
Right, no, but I'm, I'm thinking about, there's an opportunity to, to recommend other activities in addition to.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm talking about, that process gets finished, and a month later, something comes up that we don't have the budget to do, but we really should do it. I think we should be able to take some landfill tipping fees to do it, rather than kick it down the road for another year.
I'd like to address that just a second. At the last meeting we had, we were talking about the contract. Mr. Whitaker hit it right on the head. There is no contract.
I know.
This is a contract between Waste Management and whoever, and they're a very large group.
Yep.
And all it takes to cancel this tipping fee is one phone call, and they'll rewrite it somewhere else in the state or wherever they want to rewrite it, and it's over with. That's the reason I gave you the rock star scenario, because.
I totally understand that.
This thing can go away and go away quickly.
So we don't borrow against it. Good reason for that.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if, if we, if we go forward with what Mr. Scott wants, if you like, lots of time goes box, you just open it up, and you start a real tenant with your hand in that, then it'd be two handfuls, and somebody would cry, or even be three handfuls, and your whole intention, intent of what you had started in many years ago, that full file was shot the pot, so.
I think everybody's interested in the peace and dignity of Amelia County. And we want the best for this county, and we want to save every dollar we can save for them and use it wisely. Would you read this resolution?
Here's, here's a resolution that was passed out. Amelia County Board of Supervisors, resolution memorializing the census of the Amelia Board of Supervisors regarding the use of county revenue generated by Maplewood Landfill, whereas the Maplewood Landfill was authorized by the Amelia County Board of Supervisors through a special exception permit and rezoning in 1991, and whereas the intent at the time was to devote the income stream from the tipping fees into capital needs and prioritized programs. And whereas it was felt in the name of sound fiscal management to be proper to restrict those funds from becoming part of the yearly operating budget. And whereas since 1999, funds from these fees have funded or helped to fund many public investments that have benefited citizens, students, and businesses in the county, such as paving dirt roads, constructing firehouses, purchasing fire trucks and equipment, constructing an animal shelter, enhancing school technical networks, as well as Bell and Intercom upgrades, school building renovations, county building renovations, sheriff's office radio enhancements, and many other capital needs. And whereas, depending on market conditions and other factors beyond the county's control, revenues from landfill tipping fees have historically and will likely continue to vary significantly over the years. And whereas the Board of Supervisors has followed this policy since the inception of the landfill, and it served our citizens well. Now, therefore, being resolved that the Amelia County Board of Supervisors recognizes the continued need to carefully plan and prudently budget for how the county spends revenues from the Maplewood Landfill, and strongly encourages future boards of supervisors to do the same, adopted by the Amelia County Board of Supervisors this 19th day of June 2019.
I think you.
Thank you, Mr. Over.
1991.
If I said 99, that was incorrect. It's 1991. You're exactly right.
Mr. Chairman, I'm reading the same here. Mr. Harvey, read it a second time. And I guess, Mr. Little Campbell, this, this would give us, this would protect that landfill as we have been using it. Is that correct?
It's just a, a resolution, giving the sense of the, of the board. It doesn't have any legal factor because.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to accept this resolution.
All right, in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
I wasn't ready to vote.
All right.
What happened? I didn't hear.
It carried. All right, Virginia Complete Count Commission, as, as part of preparing for the 2020 census, VACO would like to know if the county has established a local complete count committee, or if there are plans to establish one.
Mr. Chairman, this is a communication we got from VACO. It wasn't something that I wanted to answer myself without bringing it to the board. It's, I think it's self-explanatory, if you've had a chance to read down through it. Some communities, although they're, they're very, they're either urban or very, very suburban, are creating complete count commission committees, and that's just to make sure that probably, if I had to guess, it would be identifying the homeless and not missing any pockets. It's probably the, the main focus there, but.
I think the CRC today indicated that they were looking into this also, to maybe help the different counties around. Did you pick up on that also?
I picked up on that as well.
Okay. All right, any further gentleman on this? Next, county administrator's report.
Mr. Chairman, perhaps we could go to the amended agenda? We could do that now, perhaps.
It's a refund.
Yes, this is a.
Refund for an overpayment, I think.
Refund for Ms. Walsh. She's, wants to give a refund of $1,351.69 for taxes overpaid on a vehicle that no longer owned, is owned by the.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I moved in to request, approved.
Very good, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Mr. Mr. Chairman, if I could, on this, we make refunds regularly throughout the month.
That's right.
We get memos from different constitutional officers or department heads. If it's properly explained, we sign off on it, it's made. Could staff instruct, or could the board instruct staff to get Mr. Gore to give us some guidance on that? Because I don't, I really don't think these, every one of these has to come in front of the Board of Supervisors.
No, either.
Mr. Walsh?
I can look at that. I've looked at it in the past. I can't.
That's good.
Statute or cite it.
That's good.
Whether or not the, the board can delegate that authority to the administrator, whether the administrator has that authority, I can get that answer for you easily.
That's good.
Very good. That's good. Any others? All right, Lou, Mike Long, Mr. Harvey?
Waste Management, the check is $183,017.62, sales for the month of May. Any questions about that? I'd be glad to answer. The monthly Southside Community College newsletter is included, and your board packet for review. If anybody would like any more information from there, we can get this thing sent to you electronically, because there are some links, the electronic version that will lead you to other things. The CRC has submitted their items of interest from May, list of their new ventures and activities. If anybody's got any questions on those, be glad to try to answer them. The DMV Select Compensation Statement is under item 10. We are six months into this, not six full months, but six, we had a partial November, but that's, as you can see, that's where we are after six. If anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer those. And Mr. Chairman, we are at the end of the items on the agenda, but we would like to have a closed session. And Mr. Gore, if you could be so kind as to give us the citation.
Chairman, I would be the motion to convene a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.237, 11A3, discuss the acquisition of real property for public purpose, namely expansion of Amelia County industrial park, where a discussion in open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategies of the county. Your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I also move. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Like so.
Motion carried. We will now, at this point in time, be in closed session. Thank you all.
What is, what is, what is this?
I mean, you know, it's...
No looser. I can't believe that.
VACO, I thought you'd run off on...
How are you seeing?
You want to come on back?
Sure. I'm jetty. Joining board back here to talk about this.
I gave him his elephant.
Mr. Harris. That's right.
Aye.
I have no other business for you tonight. That's right. They did not. Yeah, that's right. I will carry those home. Yes, sir. And we, I was, and I was referring to the, the agenda part of the meeting was over, but I don't think we've gotten the Board comments if...
No, no, we haven't had a Board comment yet, but I mean, I'll give it to you.
Okay. I will be glad to carry it on.